Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the Lancaster County Board of Commissioners meeting for Tuesday, May 13th, 2025. I am Chair Rick Vest, and to my left is Vice Chair Krista Yolcom, to her left Commissioner Matt Schulte, to my right Commissioner Sean Flowerde. Would you please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Clerk, please begin the meeting.
A copy of Nebraska Open Meeting Act is located at the wall of the rear of the hearing room. All written materials to be discussed at today's meeting can be viewed at the county's website at lancaster NE.gov. Printing options are available upon request. Brings us to item one, minutes. Approval of the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held in May 6, 2025.
I move approval of the minutes.
A second. Motion and a second to approve the minutes. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Yolcom?
Yes.
Flowerde?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yep.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item two, claims. Two A, approval of the claims processed through May 9th, 2025.
I move approval of the claims.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve item two A. Please call the roll.
Schulte?
Yep.
Yolcom?
Yes.
Flowerde?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries. Two B, approval of the claims, including billings for goods and services beyond the 90-day time period provided in Nebraska Vice Statute 23-135. That is for Vaughtscape Incorporated dated May 7th, 2025, for a total of $664,105.21. Move approval?
Second.
Motion and a second to approve item two B. Please call the roll.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yolcom?
Yes.
Flowerde?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item three, consent items. These are routine business items that are expected to be adopted without dissent. Any individual item may be removed for special good discussion and consideration by a commissioner or by any member of the public without prior notice, unless there is an exception. These items will be approved as one single vote of the Board of Commissioners. These items are the approval of: A, amongst the following county contracts; C-21-0323 with the Nebraska Department of Health and Human Services for the County Youth Services Center to provide detention services if your juveniles committed or placed with DHHS; C-21-0376 with Inmate Calling Solutions LLC doing business as ICS Solutions for inmate phone and visitation services; C-24-0860 with the Shimmer Associates Incorporated for design services related to the replacement of County Bridge R213; C-24-0859 with the Shimmer Associates Incorporated for design services related to the replacement of County Bridge B133; C-23-0595 with Rise &amp; Shine Cleaning for the annual janitorial services for three public building commissions and county facilities; C-25-0077 with the City of Lincoln Police Department for the JAG Election Security Program; B, right-of-way contracts with the following: L. Dean and Nancy Osborne, Van Dorn Street and South 138th Street, amount of $217; John Ivan's Judas Cherry and Ava Lynn Cherry-O'Rourke, South 110th Street and Martella Road, in the amount of $811; C, utility permit 2622 with Panama Energy Center LLC replacing 24 wood transmission structures in the county right-of-way on the south side of West Pella Road; D, change order two to county contract C-24-0465 with Lobato Construction LLC to reflect an increase in excavation costs due to unsuitable material encountered during roadway grading; E, agreement with Libby Milkovich for speaking services for the 2025 Nebraska Community Aid and Juvenile Justice Conference, the amount not to exceed $1,000; F, receive and place and file the following reports from Records Management and County Clerk; and G, setting a public hearing on Tuesday, May 20th, 2025 at 9:00 a.m. in Room 112 of the County Sillie Building regarding an application for a corporate manager liquor license change for Todd E. Tinnan. Move approval?
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the consent items. Please call the roll.
Flowerde?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yolcom?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries. Brings us to item four, our public hearing action items. After a public hearing has been conducted and closed, action on the item that was the subject of the public hearing will be scheduled as a separate public hearing action item. Because the public hearing has conducted and closed the item, no further testimony or evidence will be accepted during the public hearing action item portion of the agenda. Brings us to four A, resolution of the matter of vacation portions of a public road, more particularly described in attachment A, and located in Lancaster County, Nebraska.
Here's no additional.
Good morning, Commissioners. Mike Halli with Lancaster County Engineers Office. This is just a follow-up from the hearing last week for North 141st Street, south of Rock Creek Road.
Yeah, any questions, Commissioners? We had the public hearing last week. Thank you for being here, though. I would entertain a motion.
I move approval of this resolution.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Yolcom?
Yes.
Flowerde?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries. For B, resolution of the matter of amending Articles One and Two of the Lincoln Lancaster County Air Pollution Control Program Regulations and Standards as provided in attachment A.
Move approval?
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the new air pollution regulations. And we had public hearings on both of these items last week. We got testimony from everyone who wanted to have input, so we've thoroughly examined both of these topics. Please call the roll.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yolcom?
Yes.
Flowerde?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries. Brings us to item five, new business. Five A, proclaiming May 2025 as National Treatment Court Month in the County of Lancaster, Nebraska. Whereas communities nationwide are recognizing the importance of treatment courts throughout the month of May, whereas treatment courts represent a critical intervention for leading people with substance use and mental health disorders out of the criminal justice system into lives of recovery, stability, and health; whereas there are now more than 4,000 treatment courts nationwide, including successful treatment courts in the County of Lancaster, Nebraska; whereas treatment courts are recognized as the cornerstone of a nationwide trend towards criminal justice reform; whereas treatment courts have transformed the way criminal justice system responds to people with substance use and mental health disorders by combining accountability with evidence-based treatment; whereas treatment courts annually refer more than 150,000 people nationwide to life-saving treatment and recovery support services; whereas treatment courts significantly improve substance use disorder treatment outcomes, substantially reduce addiction and related crime, and do so at less expense than many other criminal justice strategies; whereas treatment courts provide... whereas treatment courts improve education, employment, housing, and financial stability, reduce foster care placements, and promote family reunification; whereas treatment courts facilitate community-wide partnerships, bringing together public safety and public health. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the County Commissioners of the County of Lancaster, Nebraska, that May 2025 is hereby recognized as National Treatment Court Month in the County of Lancaster, Nebraska, and all persons, organizations, and governmental entities in our community are encouraged to support and activities promoting treatment courts in witness thereof we have here and to signed on May 13th, 2025 by the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Lancaster, Nebraska.
Good morning, Commissioners. Jeff Kilpatrick. We have a number of staff, as well as participants, from our three treatment courts, our drug court, our DUI court, and our veterans court here with us this morning. I also would just like to read into the record an email that was received about three weeks ago. It's addressed to the supervision officer in the drug court program. You may not remember me. It's been a while. I graduated from the Lancaster County Drug Court in July of 2015. I know this isn't the purpose of this form, but I couldn't resist asking you for one last curfew extension. Please don't send me to jail for the weekend. I just wanted to take a moment to express my heartfelt gratitude at putting up with me and helping me through a tough period of my life. This is a decade overdue, but I don't think I ever properly thanked you and all of you did to support myself and other participants in drug court. I'm no wordsmith, so I'll keep it simple. On behalf of myself and all the other people you and the rest of the drug court staff have helped, thank you. So 10 years ago, this person went through our program, and they're still appreciating us.
Incredibly powerful testimony to the work that everyone involved is doing, because these are not numbers, these are not statistics, these are human beings that we're dealing with, and we're giving them an opportunity to achieve what that individual did. So thank you for reading that.
Thank you.
Commissioners?
Thank you for sharing that letter. That was really a testament to what this program can do and what your staff, the staff that works this program, can do, and the hard work that individual did, you know, for success. When I was...I met a woman at her door who invited me to sit down on the porch with her, and she started talking about her son's journey and the work that he had to do through this program. And she described that it had gotten to a point where their relationship was fractured. She didn't know what else to do to help him. He went through drug court, and now their relationship is repaired, he's working, things are much better, he's making better decisions in his life. This is good work, and I appreciate it. This is a great opportunity to recognize that.
Thank you.
At the risk, Jeff, of making people slightly uncomfortable, I'm going to ask, like you said, you have members of your staff here today that are involved in this?
Yes.
Would everyone who is involved as staff or a part of these treatment courts please stand and be recognized? And now, thank you all, and now you all will forgive me, but those who have participated in these treatment courts who are here this morning, if you would stand as well, we just want to thank you for your effort. Tremendous courage, tremendous commitment to get through it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have a motion?
Oh, well, I move approval of this proclamation.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve. Please call the roll.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yolcom?
Yes.
Flowerde?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries. Brings us to item five B, proclaiming May 11th through 17th, 2025 as National Police Week, and May 15th, 2025 as Peace Officers Memorial Day in the County of Lancaster, Nebraska. Commissioners, I also have a proclamation to read into the record. Before the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Lancaster, Nebraska, in the matter of proclaiming May 11th through 17th, 2025 as National Police Week, and May 15th, 2025 as Peace Officers Memorial Day in the County of Lancaster, Nebraska, to recognize National Police Week 2025 and Peace Officers Memorial Day, to honor the service and sacrifice of those law enforcement officers killed in the line of duty while protecting our communities and safeguarding our democracy, the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Lancaster, Nebraska, issues the following proclamation. Whereas there are approximately 800,000 law enforcement officers serving in communities across the United States, including the dedicated members of the Lancaster County Sheriff's Office; whereas since the first recorded death in 1786, over 24,000 law enforcement officers in the United States have made the ultimate sacrifice that have been killed or died in the line of duty, including the following four members of the Lancaster County Sheriff's Office. Deputy Sheriff William Johnson died in 1959 after suffering a heart attack following a prisoner transport. Sergeant Franklin Furrer died in 1973 after suffering a heart attack while serving a search warrant. Deputy Sheriff Craig D. Dodge was killed in 1987 responding to a domestic disturbance. Deputy Sheriff Troy Bailey died in 2020 after suffering a heart attack three days prior. Whereas the names of these dedicated public servants are engraved on the walls of the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial in Washington, DC. Whereas 244 new names of fallen heroes are being added to the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial this spring, including 147 officers who died in the line of duty in 2024, and 97 officers killed in previous years. And whereas, it is important that all citizens know and understand the problems, duties, and responsibilities of their law enforcement agencies, and that members of the Lancaster County Sheriff's Office recognize their duty to serve people by safeguarding life and property, protecting them against violence and disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression or intimidation. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Lancaster, Nebraska, does hereby proclaim May 15th, 2025 as Peace Officers Memorial Day, and the week of May 11th through May 17th, 2025 as Police Week, with appropriate ceremonies in which all of our people may join in commemorating law enforcement officers, past and present, who have, by their faithful and loyal dedication to their responsibilities, have rendered a dedicated service to their communities, and in doing so, have established for themselves an enviable and enduring reputation for preserving the rights and security of all citizens. In witness thereof, we have here and to sign May 13th, 2025 by the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Lancaster, Nebraska.
Thank you, Commissioners. I'm Terry Wadon, Lancaster County Sheriff. I appreciate the opportunity to present this, have this proclamation considered by you all. President John F. Kennedy first proclaimed May 15th as Police Officer Memorial Day in 1963. President Clinton then established that in a more formal manner with flags to be flown at half-staff on Police Memorial Day. So this has been going on for a long time, and today at noon, we'll be holding a service on the front steps of the Justice and Law Enforcement Center to honor those deputy sheriffs and Lincoln police officers who have died in line of duty. Thank you.
Sheriff, thank you for being here, and thank you for bringing this before us. It's an honor. To honor these individuals, we all know that on any given day, you and your deputies get the call, and you don't know what day, what you're going to be responding to on that day, and these officers faithfully carried out their duties to the end of their life, and we are honored to honor all of you.
Thank you.
I'd entertain a motion.
I would move approval of this resolution.
Motion and a second to approve item five B. Please call the roll.
Flowerde?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yolcom?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you very much. Five C, resolution of the matter of transfer of appropriations from the General Fund miscellaneous budget to the General Fund Election Commission and Mental Health Board budgets.
All right. Good morning. Dennis Meyer, County Budget and Fiscal Officer. Today's resolution is cleaning up two general fund budgets. As was mentioned, one is the election commissioner, and the other is the mental health board. In the resolution, you will see that the total amount of the transfer is 435,000. 400,000 of that will go to the election commissioner, and 35,000 will go to the mental health board. This is our second resolution to kind of start cleaning up the budget process. We'll probably have at least one more. I've got a deadline of May 22nd that's out there. Those dollar amounts should be a little bit smaller as we're trying to clean up some of those this year. We just had additional costs due to the elections, and then due to the number and length of mental health board hearings, so that's kind of setting them up so that we can finish out the fiscal year.
Good. Thank you, Dennis.
I would move approval.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve. Please call the roll.
Yolcom?
Yes.
Flowerde?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries. Five D, resolution of the matter of extending the deadline for hearing protests regarding real property in Lancaster County from July 25th, 2025 to August 10th, 2025.
I move approval.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve. Please call the roll.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yolcom?
Yes.
Flowerde?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries. Brings us to item six, legislative update.
I have nothing. I know we did get some emails from Joe that talked about what's going on in the legislature today regarding the inheritance tax, but I have nothing to add.
There are some amendments to it, but I don't think they substantively change stuff for us.
Very good. We'll move forward.
Item seven is reserved for executive session.
I move that we go into executive session for potential litigation, which is imminent as evidenced by a communication of a claim or threat of litigation to or by the public body, and legal advice, and to protect the public interest at 9:23 a.m.
Second.
Motion and a second to go into executive session. Please call the roll.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yolcom?
Yes.
Flowerde?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries. Commissioners, I have a note that we're holding five I from the county attorney, so that brings us to item six, legislative update.
I have nothing. I know we did get some emails from Joe that talked about what's going on in the legislature today regarding the inheritance tax, but I have nothing to add.
There are some amendments to it, but I don't think they substantively change stuff for us.
Very good. We'll move forward.
Item seven is reserved for executive session.
I move that we go into executive session for potential litigation, which is imminent as evidenced by a communication of a claim or threat of litigation to or by the public body, and legal advice, and to protect the public interest at 9:23 a.m.
Second.
Motion and a second to go into executive session. Please call the roll.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yolcom?
Yes.
Flowerde?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Five C, resolution of the matter of transfer of appropriations from the General Fund miscellaneous budget to the General Fund Election Commission and Mental Health Board budgets.
All right. Good morning. Dennis Meyer, County Budget and Fiscal Officer. Today's resolution is cleaning up two general fund budgets. As was mentioned, one is the election commissioner, and the other is the mental health board. In the resolution, you will see that the total amount of the transfer is 435,000. 400,000 of that will go to the election commissioner, and 35,000 will go to the mental health board. This is our second resolution to kind of start cleaning up the budget process. We'll probably have at least one more. I've got a deadline of May 22nd that's out there. Those dollar amounts should be a little bit smaller as we're trying to clean up some of those this year. We just had additional costs due to the elections, and then due to the number and length of mental health board hearings, so that's kind of setting them up so that we can finish out the fiscal year.
Good. Thank you, Dennis.
I would move approval.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve. Please call the roll.
Yolcom?
Yes.
Flowerde?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries. Five E, spaced rental agreement with the Lincoln Firefighters Reception Hall in conjunction with the July 2025 in-person property valuation protest. Cost is $500 per day.
I move approval.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve. Please call the roll.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yolcom?
Yes.
Flowerde?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries. Five D, resolution of the matter of extending the deadline for hearing protests regarding real property in Lancaster County from July 25th, 2025 to August 10th, 2025.
I move approval.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve. Please call the roll.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yolcom?
Yes.
Flowerde?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries. Five E, spaced rental agreement with the Lincoln Firefighters Reception Hall in conjunction with the July 2025 in-person property valuation protest. Cost is $500 per day.
I move approval.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yolcom?
Yes.
Flowerde?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries. Five F, adoption of the 2025 Lancaster County Board of Equalization Policies and Procedures for the property valuation protest.
Move approval?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Flowerde?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yolcom?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries. Five G, special events permit application from Ben Cohoon with Off-the-Clock Events LLC doing business as Pink Gorilla Events for the Market-to-Market Relay on October 11th, 2025.
This is a great annual event. I move approval.
Second.
Pink gorilla events, you just, you know it's high-quality stuff, and this is something that's been going on, and a lot of people participate. Very fortunate to have it. I'm going to have to miss it this year, unfortunately. Please call the roll.
Yolcom?
Yes.
Flowerde?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries. Five H, acceptance of an amended sub grant award and special conditions from the Nebraska Crime Commission's Office of Violence Prevention and Grant Program in the amount of $140,613.
I move approval.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve. Please call the roll.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yolcom?
Yes.
Flowerde?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries. Commissioners, I have a note that we're holding five I from the county attorney, so that brings us to item six, legislative update.
I have nothing. I know we did get some emails from Joe that talked about what's going on in the legislature today regarding the inheritance tax, but I have nothing to add.
There are some amendments to it, but I don't think they substantively change stuff for us.
Very good. We'll move forward.
Item seven is reserved for executive session.
I move that we go into executive session for potential litigation, which is imminent as evidenced by a communication of a claim or threat of litigation to or by the public body, and legal advice, and to protect the public interest at 9:23 a.m.
Second.
Motion and a second to go into executive session. Please call the roll.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yolcom?
Yes.
Flowerde?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries.
We're now in executive session.[1576.73] Shulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries.
We're now in executive session.[386.72]
I'd entertain a motion.
I mean, we come out of executive committee at nine fifty-five a.m.
Second.
Motion in a second to come out of executive session. Please call the roll.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Shulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Best?
Yes.
Motion carries. Brings us to item eight, public comment. Members of the public wishing to speak on items related to county business not in the agenda may do so at this time.
Any members of the public wishing to speak? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk.
Announcements. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold a staff meeting, including budget hearings, on Thursday, May fifteenth at eight-thirty a.m. in room one-twelve of the county city building. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold the following meetings and public hearings on Tuesday, May twentieth, twenty-twenty-five, nine a.m. in room twelve of the county city building. The Board of Commissioners' regular meeting, a public hearing regarding an application for a corporate manager or liquor license change for Todd E. Tinnan. The Board of Equalization meetings, and departmental budget hearings. County commissioners can be reached at four oh two four four one seven four four seven, or commish@lancaster.ind.gov. Lancaster County Board of Commissioners' meeting is broadcast live on LNK TV. LNK TV is available on ALO Channel Two and Spectrum Channel thirteen hundred. For the rebroadcast schedule, visit linkin NE.gov. Meetings are also streamed live on YouTube and Facebook. LNK TV apps are available on Roku, Apple TV, and Amazon Fire TV. Item ten is adjournment.
I move we adjourn.
Second.
Motion in a second to adjourn. Please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Shulte?
Yes.
Best?
Best? Yes.
Motion carries.
We are adjourned.